We do not have a work. Is it recorded?
It's ready.
We do not have a work session, but we have an executive session this evening. The executive session notice reads as follows. Aiken City Council will go into executive session pursuant to section 30-4-70, parenthesis A, parenthesis two, to receive legal advice where the legal advice relates to a pending, threatened, or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the public agency in other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. Specifically, the city council will receive a legal briefing regarding the Blake et al. versus the City of Aiken lawsuit. Also, the Aiken City Council will go into executive session pursuant to section 30-4-70, parenthesis A, parenthesis one, of the South Carolina Code for the Discussion of Employment, Appointment, Compensation, or Promotion of a Person Regulated by City Council. Specifically, city council will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the biannual performance review and other related issues of the city manager. The executive session discussion, if needed, may reconvene following the conclusion of the regular council meeting. Is there a motion to go into executive session, please?
I so move.
Councilwoman Diggs and Councilwoman Woltz second the motion. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We will now move into executive session. The meeting will begin, the regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. We need a motion to come out of executive session.
I move. Gracious.
And I second, Madam Mayor.
Well, tell everybody what we're moving for. I move that we come out of executive session.
And Councilwoman Woltz, no, Broll seconded. All in favor?
I agree.
Sorry. All in favor? Welcome to the January 13th meeting of the Aiken City Council. If you are inclined, please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the City of Aiken the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In your name we pray. Amen. Chief Ranka, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its foundation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the meeting begins, I will review the guidelines for this meeting. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is required. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. During the non-agenda public comment section, each speaker has three minutes and can only speak once. We now move to additions and deletions to the agenda. I recognize Mayor Protem Edgerado for this agenda. I am sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and Happy New Year. Hard to believe it's been a month since we've gotten together, but it's good to be back again. Hope you enjoy the blizzard of 25 that we suffered last week. It was fun for a little while until it started icing on the trees and I called Stuart freaking out that we're going to have an ice storm and we're going to lose our minds. Fortunately, it got warmer after that. Anyway, glad to be here. Mayor, there are no additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, so I present that as a motion.
Thank you. Since he made the motion, is there a second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll, second the motion. All in favor, please? Motion passed. Thank you. The minutes were provided to council for review prior to the meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the minute?
I so move.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Madam.
Councilwoman Price second the motion. Any comments or changes? All in favor? Thank you. Motion passed. We have four presentations this evening. The first is a presentation by Mrs. Kathy Traver, Executive Director of the Aiken Performing Arts Group, with an update on the APA's work and involvement in the community. Mrs. Traver, will you come to the podium? Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council.
Good morning.
I'm going to accompany Kathy.
I see that.
I'm Mark Hollingsworth. I'm president of Aiken Performing Arts Board, and we're here tonight to request the reinstatement of our memorandum of understanding with the city, so thank you for allowing us to offer you a brief presentation on our accomplishments and to demonstrate our importance to our community. Now, I would like to introduce our executive director, Kathy Traver.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. Aiken Performing Arts was founded in 2005, and so we've been going strong for 19 years. And we feel like we have really done a lot for our community. We've brought all different kinds of performing arts to the Amentum Center for the Performing Arts, and we also do educational outreach with all of our performers. We do five performances every year, and we do five different shows, two performances each, and an educational outreach for each artist group. So we're going to show you a short video that tells you about our current season.
We've spent the last 15 years of our lives learning every single Beatles song, which means that we are ready to play any one of them for you here tonight. But what makes this show even cooler are your requests of these songs. When you came in here tonight, we had those request cards set up. We put together a set list based upon the songs that you guys picked.
While my guitar gently rests. (Laughter) (Music) 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 (Music)
So you can see that we try to present a variety of music, and that's just this season. And we've become so successful, I'm bragging now because, I'm really bragging about our town. Our town has supported Aiken Performing Arts so well that we have sold out almost every show for the last 10 years. And so we took a little chance this season, and we added a show. We added a show. So in January, we're having, instead of two shows of the Abba Tribute, we're having three shows, and it's already sold. So we think that this is a great town, and we think that we bring a lot to our community. Now, the next thing we do is our educational outreach, and we have a little video that tells a little bit about that.
Here we go. (Music) 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 Aiken Performing Arts is important to the community because we are bringing culture into our community here in Aiken.
Aiken Performing Arts not only inspires our students, we put instruments in their hands in order to bring music to everyone.
I believe in the power of music. It changes kids' lives every day. They begin to see themselves differently, and they begin to believe that all things are possible.
Our school music program has been greatly enhanced by the pianos and other instruments donated by our community.
Please help us keep music playing in the school by donating any instrument to a security federal bank. If you give us a piano, we'll move it, we'll tune it, so that it can bring joy again.
Thank you, Kathy. Could you put up the PowerPoint, please? There we are. So as Kathy said, one of our missions is to present live entertainment to the community. And as you can see, we offer a wide variety. These are some of the types of genres that we've offered in the last 20 years. So you can see all kinds of tributes, jazz, Broadway, classical, rock and roll, even magic shows and comedy shows, so something for everybody. Our ticket sales for the event have gone up 67% since 2019, which is why we're now offering shows three nights, some of them three nights instead of just the two. As far as our economic impact is concerned, we have support from several institutions locally, and we're regular grant recipients. South Carolina Arts Commission, City of Aiken, ATACs, and also we have received some grants in the past from National Endowment for the Arts. We also survey our 10 days and find that many dine in local restaurants on show nights. I'm one of those. My wife and I eat at a restaurant right before the show almost every night, every time. Another part of our mission is directed at educational outreach, as she said, and here's some great numbers to take a look at. Our school outreach performances, 3,500 students total since 2017. Either, students are either brought to the Amentum Center for the Performing Arts, or sometimes we go out to their actual school. We started a new scholarship program last year for college students dedicated to the arts, and one student from Aiken Technical College and one from USC Aiken each received a $1,000 scholarship. The Instruments in Your Attic Program, which I've run since 2017, receives donations of old band and orchestra instruments as well as pianos. We refurbish them as necessary and then donate them to Aiken County School Music Programs. Since 2017, we have placed instruments in the district with a total value of over $42,000. And it's actually more than that now because we've got four instruments waiting to be placed. We sponsored an Artist in Residence Program last year with Kevin Spencer, who, an interesting person, you should go to his website, you can just Google him, Kevin Spencer Magician. He goes into public schools and helps students improve cognitive, motor, communication, and social skills while developing creativity through, by teaching them certain magic tricks. He also works with area special education teachers to integrate his techniques into their classrooms. And it was a very, very huge success. He worked with local teachers, he worked with teachers in Augusta, and he worked with some students here in Aiken. And lastly, we have supported several programs at the Aiken Center for the Arts, including Creativity Out Loud, which is a program we started last year. It's an after-school program for students to learn keyboard and vocal skills, the Art and Music Camp for special needs individuals, we've helped support that, and the Aiken Youth Orchestra as well. So we give back to the community. We bring in money for the concerts, and we try our very best to relocate those funds back into the community, primarily in the area of education. Our successes are due to the members of our Board of Directors. Would you stand if we had any more board members here tonight? Thank you very much. We have a couple here. Our Board of Directors work very, very hard to complete our mission to present quality professional artists to audience in the theater setting and provide quality educational outreach programs to students in the greater Aiken area. So again, thank you for allowing us to present to you our positive impact on Aiken, and we hope to see you at some of our future shows.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The next presentation is by Captain Michael Good of the Salvation Army and Mary Anton of the Aiken County Homeless Coalition. They're going to speak about homelessness in Aiken. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Mary Anton, and I reside at 212 Box Elder here in Aiken. I'm also the Chair of the Aiken County Homeless Coalition, a nine-member volunteer group that is the only nonprofit in Aiken advocating for the rights of those without housing fit for habitation. This demographic is often referred to as the homeless. To get my presentation on?
He's working on it.
One more question. Do I advance it? Okay. Okay. Before I get into, I'm going to be giving you my update of what's been going on in the last year, but before I do that, I just want to define a few things because the word homeless means different things to different people. The homeless are classified as unsheltered and sheltered.
Mary, excuse, Mary. Could you put the mic, yes, so we can hear you.
Unsheltered homeless sleep at night in their vehicles, bundled in doorways of buildings, in garages, on porches, hidden in any spot where they feel it is safe. They break into abandoned buildings and create homes for themselves, or join encampments in the many wooded areas that surround many neighborhoods. You may be surprised to hear that unsheltered homeless are also those living in spaces where the inhabitants have no water, no electricity, or the home is beyond repair. As a caseworker at St. Vincent de Paul's Food Pantry that also provides help for utilities and prescription medicine, I see many residents of Aiken that have difficulty paying their utility bills every month. Without any savings, many low-income homeowners in Aiken do not have the money to repair a leaky roof, fix or replace a furnace, or pay for homeowner's insurance when a hurricane damages their homes. Sheltered homeless are also, have been able to find places to sleep that are classified as fit for habitation. These places include those in emergency shelters, Salvation Army's 44-bed shelter, hotels, motels paid by vouchers provided by nonprofits, churches, individuals, specialized group homes like Nurture Home for the mentally disadvantaged, and Comby Center for domestic and sexual violence victims, or transitional homes like Oxford House for those recovering from substance abuse. The number being sheltered in Aiken does not meet the need. In January 2024, the Aiken County Homeless Coalition, which I will refer to as ACHC, took on the responsibility for planning and running the annual HUD event called the PIT Count in Aiken County. The PIT Count is a one-day snapshot of the homeless population and is one of the ways that the federal government is made aware of our homeless problem. Nonprofits and local state governments seeking federal grants to combat their homeless problems can use this data to justify their need for grant monies. Volunteers are recruited from the community to survey homeless people, and the data is sent to HUD. You can see the various ways that the homeless are counted in South Carolina. Please note three categories in the list. The PIT Count, the McKinnon Vento, and the HMIS, which is an acronym for Homeless Management Information System, HUD's national database for monitoring services provided for the homeless across the country. Collection and analysis of homeless data is extremely important. It tells a community about trends, what services are needed, and what solutions implemented are working and which are not. I'm going to be primarily talking about the PIT Count, but remember HMIS because that comes into play as we talk. We did not get enough volunteers from the community to survey much of the county, and we had to restrict our surveying to the City of Aiken and a couple of locations. I'm a little perplexed because that last one wasn't a slide I expected. Let's go on. In the next slide, you will see that the Aiken County Falls under HUD's Midlands Area Consortium for the Homeless, MAC, so you can see where our county is. The data we generated helps to strengthen local coordination of services needed and equally important services to put our county in MAC and HUD's list of counties that need to be considered for funding. After the official tally was made in 2024, we discovered that Aiken County had the highest unsheltered PIT Count in MAC. So of all those 13 counties, we had the highest. Now, that doesn't mean, you know, people ask me all the time, does that mean we have more homeless people than Richland County? The answer is no. What it means is that we had, we were very good at counting, and it also means that we counted unsheltered homeless. Now, a lot of the counties like Richland have put their unsheltered homeless into shelters, so they would count under the sheltered. That is the part of Aiken County that we counted, just that little circle. So when I say that these are Aiken county numbers, they really aren't. They are mostly Aiken with a little bit of the valley. And we weren't going to do the valley, but because of the fact that there's so many homeless over there, we felt we had to spread ourselves a little thinner. Although this event is very time-consuming and labor-intensive activity, April Tiller and Diane Saunders, two members of the ACHC Board, agreed to act as coordinators for the 2025 Aiken County PIT Count scheduled for this month, January 22nd to the 26th. The success of the PIT Count is very much dependent on community service provider and government support. Diane, if you want to just raise your hand? So anyone wants to, anyone wants to sign up and volunteer, she'll take your name. All right, let's look at, take a look at some of the 2024 PIT Count data and what it revealed. Here's just some basic democratic, demographic information. You know, a lot of people will tell me, they think that all the homeless people are males. 57% male, 42% female. And this, all right, this information is just for Aiken County, Aiken City. We separated it. And it's 56% black and 41% white. I've had many people say, aren't all the homeless people black men aged 40 to 50? In this age statistic, you will see that the largest group we surveyed was working-age adults. Most of the children counted are living in hotels or other sheltered places. HUD does not count them as unsheltered under their count, but we did when we found them because they need stable, sustainable housing, just like someone who's unsheltered. It is common for communities to keep all homeless data locally, and we have done that. As a caseworker at St. Vincent de Paul, the rise of homelessness among our elderly citizens over the past year has been alarming. Many of our low-income seniors live on monthly income of $1,100 from Social Security and have little or no savings. Try to, you know, look at your budget and stuff. $1,100 does not go far. In the next slide, I provide some data provided by Vicki Miller-McCarthy of the Aiken County Public School System for the families that self-identify as homeless under the McKinnon Vento Program. It should be noted that the number of homeless children in Aiken schools is roughly half the number of the entire Aiken County school system. In addition, the present homeless children count is about 20% higher than from a year ago, 275 versus 221. Now, that's a county. It's a little difficult for them to take out just the, I said, give me just the numbers that the parents vote for you guys, and it's difficult to do that because of the way the school systems work. But more or less, given that many parents do not want to admit to homelessness, the statistics are below the actual homeless children in our community. One of the questions posed in the survey is what was the ZIP code where you have last had a permanent residence? I get this all the time, too. We don't have a homeless problem, it's from someplace else. It is not. 83% of those we polled, surveyed are from Aiken County. Now, I will tell you, you do get, within Aiken County, there is what we call dumping of homeless people. When you have a hospital in your community like we do, other communities nearby might take a homeless person and take them to the hospital when they're sick, and they don't come back and get them. Michael Good gets a call, or they actually come to his place and leave them there. Aurora, the same situation happens with Aurora. So, you know, when you guys are doing something, and it's important that the whole community, the whole county does something too, because there is dumping going on. The most shocking finding from the 2024 PIT Count was that, shown in this slide, 49% of the people that were surveyed have been homeless for over a year. We have people who've been homeless out there for 15 years. And the problem with having a large homeless population that is, and if you're homeless for more than a year, you're called chronic homeless. Chronic homeless people are much harder to get back into sustainable living. They've gotten used to being homeless, they live on charity, and they just stay there. Many of them have a lot of problems. Now, I haven't, here's another one. Some of the questions that we asked during the PIT Count are pretty personal questions. You know, do you have a drug addiction problem? Do you have alcohol? Are you, do you... Are you, do you, you have mental illness? And we found that a large number of them, sixty-four percent, had mental illness. And one of the reasons for this is when it comes time to funding, we have a population here that needs help. And the government, the federal government, has programs for giving help to people who are homeless and have specific problems. One of the things that we we look at the community and we say, what are the primary reasons why we're getting an increasing rise of homeless people? And two things stand out. Low household incomes, and the other one is the lack of affordable, low-income housing. You can see there, we have fifteen percent of our population here in Aiken is considered living below the poverty level. And that amounts to five thousand people here in Aiken are at risk of homelessness. And as inflation goes up and prices, we all see it in the grocery store and our utility bills. As it goes higher and higher, we're going to get more and more people who are possibly going to become homeless. In the county, we have twenty-nine thousand people. And you can see what the incomes are. One person who is considered at the poverty level makes fifteen thousand dollars a year. A family of four people making thirty-one thousand dollars or less is considered that. Rents have been increasingly going up. Today, you're paying, people are paying hundreds of dollars more than they did just a few years ago. Affordable housing. Aiken Housing Authority handles low-rent public housing and housing choice. And here's some, some information from Shanasha Lawton over there. They presently have a hundred and fifty-two public housing units, and seventy units are scheduled to be closed and the property sold in the near future, leaving only eighty-two public housing units. This forty-six percent decrease in the public housing units at this time of rising homelessness does not bode well for the community. In the fall of twenty twenty-three, they opened up Housing Choice, which used to be called Section Eight, application process, and closed in one day after over three thousand applicants were taken. Over seventy-seven percent of the applicants qualified as extremely low-income limits. What does that mean? A family of one must have a household income of less than eighteen thousand dollars, and a family of four, less than thirty-one thousand dollars. Presently, the AHA manages eight hundred and forty-four leased units, five hundred and ten of those in Aiken. At the end of twenty twenty-three, they managed eight hundred and thirty-five units, numbers that seem too low to house the extremely low-income groups that applied. After I was done with the PIT Count, I was tired. And I said, okay, let me rest, but I knew I couldn't because I was just beginning the work that had to be done in twenty twenty-four. And I was lucky because I approached Stuart here, and he let me come in and talk to him. And he, we discussed our findings. And by June, we had a Aiken Homeless Task Force that was sponsored by the city. And we came up with a mission statement. We collect data on homelessness and at-risk population demographics to better identify the most efficient, cost-effective solutions for the community at large in mind. We advise and inform city, county, government on the state of homelessness and at-risk populations in our community. We suggest and propose solutions to homelessness based on data collected and analyzed. We advise and inform private sector organizations on the state of homeless and at-risk populations in our community and to help identify governmental and private funding for low-income homeless housing. Now, we haven't done any of this yet. We've had three meetings, and just the concept of collecting data is where we're at right now. Because we want to be able to give you data, information, on what should be done. Not just let's pick and choose what we think needs to be done, but here's data that identifies what our problem is, which groups we need to address, et cetera, et cetera. Here's a schematic that shows the flow of, with various organizations here in Aiken. The Homeless Committee would be, and then the homeless are at the bottom. In between, you can see how the services would flow from the various entities, both public and private, and how information flows. This is an idealized situation. This does not exist at present.
Good afternoon, city council members, mayor. My name is Captain Michael Good, and together with my wife, Captain Malika Good, we serve as the commanding officers of the Salvation Army that serves the city of Aiken. We bring greetings from the Chair of our Board, Mr. Clark McCants, as well as the outstanding men and women that serve on our advisory board tirelessly. We have been here for six months, and we've experienced a lot in Aiken already. The Salvation Army has been serving the Aiken region since nineteen twenty-seven. Of the many social service programs that we offer, we are most notably known for our Ridge Shield Emergency Solutions Shelter. It is a mouthful. This evening, I would like to quickly explain the services that we offer at our shelter as well as the current trends that we are seeing. Our Ridge Shield Emergency Solutions Shelter, located at six oh four Park Avenue, starts off as a ten-day emergency night shelter that addresses the immediate needs of individuals facing homelessness. Individuals come to us on some of the worst days of their lives, searching for a way to have a better tomorrow, but realizing that the first step is finding safe housing for the night. We offer up to forty-four beds a night, but during instances of disasters such as the hurricane last year or severe weather like we just experienced, we can bring in emergency beds, allowing us to house fifty-four individuals. We're the only facility in the region that shelters men, women, and families. Our Ridge Shield Shelter provides a safe place to sleep, bathroom facilities, laundry facilities, three meals and two snacks a day, and emergency casework. Also at the Ridge Shield Shelter, our soup kitchen provides close to thirty thousand meals a year to individuals facing food insecurity. After ten days of emergency stay at our facility, an individual is given the opportunity to enroll in what is called the LifeNav program, with the stay of up to ninety days, but depending upon participation can be extended. The LifeNav program at our Ridge Shield Emergency Solutions Shelter is a program overlay which extends our current strengths through behaviorally informed system improvements. Essentially, what this means is if an individual decides to enroll in our program after their ten-day emergency stay, a LifeNav caseworker is assigned to them and begins with the question, how can I help you? We understand that homelessness does not have a one-size-fits-all approach. So the caseworker begins intense case management to track the behaviors that led that individual to a point of homelessness. The reasons are different for each person, but as the individual's life story begins to unfold, situations such as mental illness, addiction, education, learned behaviors, illness, job loss, and other life events begin to stand out. From there, the caseworker assists the individual in creating quality-of-life goals. The aim of LifeNav is to reduce the experience of homelessness and maximize investments that save lives. Essentially, in ninety days, we, with the aid of trained staff, we aim to take someone from a place of homelessness to a place of sustainable, permanent housing. Now, the face of homelessness in our community is certainly changing. For matters of today's talk, we would classify the individuals we work with experiencing homelessness as either situational or chronic. Those that are situationally homeless are individuals who experience either a specific point-in-time event or a season of events that have led them to a place of losing residency. Many of these individuals have never found themselves in this situation before, and so they come to the Ridge Shield Emergency Solutions Shelter looking for a way to get back on their feet. Many of these individuals have income of some kind, whether that be disability or social security, though many are currently employed. In the LifeNav program, we begin to track the behaviors that have led them to being in our facility. Money mismanagement, illness, domestic violence, and other factors all play a role in individuals seeking us and our assistance. However, according to HUD, chronically homeless individuals are defined as individuals who have been homeless for twelve months or more. Many of these individuals are chronically homeless, finding themselves seeking temporary solution to their problems at hand. Warm food, protection from the elements, and other items are used as our response to these individuals. But for the large majority of the individuals that reside at our Ridge Shield Shelter, they would be considered as individuals facing situational homelessness. For the work that we do, it is very important to understand and differentiate between the two groups as the way in which we meet their needs and respond has to be different for each. Over the next few slides, as I wrap up, I would like to show you the current trends that we are facing in our Ridge Shield Emergency Solutions Shelter. Please understand that these are just trends that are views from our vantage point. However, they do paint somewhat of a picture of where the trend of homelessness is going in our area. In two thousand and twenty-three, we had nine thousand four hundred and forty-nine nights of lodging. In two thousand and twenty-four, we had nine thousand six hundred and sixty-five nights of lodging. Most startling is the next statistic. In two thousand and twenty-three, we had five hundred and fifteen unduplicated homeless individuals that came to our shelter. But in twenty twenty-four, it grew to six hundred and forty-two unduplicated individuals, which was a twenty-four percent rise. If this trend continues, in twenty twenty-five, we will have seven hundred and ninety-six homeless individuals that come to us for our services. But here is the good thing. In two thousand and twenty-three, one hundred and thirty-two individuals came through our LifeNav program, and they found themselves permanently housed after ninety days. That number grew to a hundred and thirty-seven individuals in twenty twenty-four, which is twenty-one percent of the many individuals that come to see us. I've been asked that if the number of individuals we are serving in our facility has gone up by twenty-four percent, what is the reason that the number permanently housed through the LifeNav program essentially stayed the same? The fact of the matter is there are not enough resources for individuals leaving our facility. And on top of it, I have one part-time caseworker, myself and my wife, who are daily fighting this battle at the shelter. However, we know that the key to individuals getting back to a place of self-sufficiency and sustainability comes through intentional programs such as the LifeNav program, facilitated by your local Salvation Army. In fact, this year, we set a goal with our staff that this number increases by fifteen percent. I do want to take this time to thank you as the city council for the support that you have given up to this point, but I also acknowledge that there's still much more work to do in our community. And today, I stand as a Salvation Army with many partner agencies and say that I'm committed, and we're committed, to eliminating poverty and homelessness in Aiken. Thank you.
We've talked about the problems. We have to look to the future. We have to come up with solutions. We have to work together. In December, we invited Melissa Carlisle from CASH, and she gave a talk online, and we invited all kinds of people to come and listen to her presentation. It was fabulous. It was absolutely fabulous because they are very similar in the organizations they have, and we can learn a lot from them. I have, I'm going to be sending out the particular video to everybody again because most people didn't make it to the meeting. I do want to give a little plug to the one elected official who came to the meeting, and that was Yes. And he's actually my representative. He came and he listened, and that's really the first step in everything, is coming and listening. And I know a lot of people who watched her, didn't quite understand what all, everything meant, but for me, every word she said mattered because she has, she's like four or five years ahead of us. And one of the things that she did say is that things really started moving when we got a paid employee who was responsible for doing something for the homeless. You know, my group is all volunteers. Now, these are the things that stuck out to me. They have a centralized resource center that uses the HMIS system or coordinated entry to assess and connect the homeless with housing and services. That centralized resource center was made by a nonprofit that got corporate and private funding. The next group that she interacts with is the Housing Development Corporation of Rock Hill, and they're also a nonprofit. It helps people buy, keep, and fix their homes. It has affordable housing units. It rents and manages. In addition to this, this agency works to provide permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing programs in partnership with our agency to transition households from homelessness to housing. Although it is a separate nonprofit, it is fully staffed by the city of Rock Hill. They have funding that they get from various grants. Most of them have been state grants. They get money, they use the money from the opioid funds to support, if in an earlier slide where they use it to support people who are rapid rehousing for people who are drug addicts, for example. They have a free bus service in the city of Rock Hill. They pay for it by advertising on the buses and some grants. But one of the big problems with a lot of people at low income is they can't get to jobs because they're, the bus transportation, public transportation is almost non-existent here. You can't have a job past seven o'clock at night because they stop. It costs three dollars every time you go on them. So, and that's something that people who are homeless just don't have. Public and private organizations that work together to identify and fund homeless initiatives. We don't have this stuff here. And this would be our future, to look at how we could adapt what they are doing here. And, you know, that's one of the challenges that we're going to be working on in the twenty twenty-five. I think together, you know, including the entire county possibly, would be the way to get there. There's some questions that need to be addressed that I just wrote some. What is being done to prevent homelessness? You know, we talk about those that are already homeless, but there are a lot of factors that can be looked at to not get homeless people. Increase household incomes and/or encourage property developers to include some low-income units. How do you get private and public organizations to provide services that are homeless-person-centered versus the present organization-centered services? Why do the community needs of the lowest-income people in Aiken County receive so little of the city and county budget? For example, how much of the one percent or penny tax is allotted for the benefit of homeless and risk populations? How much of the opioid money will be going to the homeless who suffer from mental illness and substance abuse? What do we do with homeless seniors at the emergency shelter? Michael one time told me he went in there and he thought he was at a nursing home because there were so many walkers and canes. We have long waiting lists at the subsidized low-income senior facilities. And when will we be getting a transitional center for temporary housing and management services? Michael does a little bit of that. He sort of is using what he has, but it's not really enough. Homeless services cost money. And all the statistics say, it may seem like it's a lot of money now, but in the long run, you're saving money because these people are not being, going to the hospitals. They're not being incarcerated. They are being helped so that they can become sustainable. It costs a lot of money to run that shelter. Forty thousand dollars a month is their operating cost there. And you all know what you give them. It's not even a fraction of what it takes to run that place for a month. And so it's the kind of thing that we have to start supporting those kind of organizations. I just want to end with some thank yous because you guys deserve a lot of thank yous. I can't say enough about Stuart. You don't pay him enough, okay? And I don't even know what he pays. He welcomed me in. He listened, and that meant a lot at, you know, from February. I bugged him all the time. He listened, and when he thought what I was asking for sounded reasonable, he went the next step. I don't know how he talked to you guys, but to me, it sounded very encouraging. I also want to thank each of you for granting the last of the plutonium money for homeless work in the community and for hosting the Homeless Task Force. The city of Aiken is the only government, local government entity in Aiken County that has actually taken the first step to admitting that the homelessness is a problem in Aiken County and that it needs to be addressed. When the community problems develop in the community, the local elected officials are the ones that are expected to plan for the future, solve any problems that develop, and spend the taxpayers' money wisely. Because, you know, you're, we're going to call you. Because, you know, you're, we're going to call you when something goes bad. And the thing about homelessness is that we can't, it can't get to a certain level and then us say, oh, let's do a quick fix. It doesn't work that way. A lot of the stuff that has to be done, building a transition center is not going to be done overnight. It has to be planned, and three years later, you might get it. So, thank you for listening and...
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
The next presentation is by Mark Costner, project manager for the city on mixed-use building to be constructed on the one-hundred block of Newberry Street Northwest to update city council on the status of the project. Mr. Costner.
Good evening. Good evening, Mark Costner, seventy-one fourteen Hiddenfield Court in Aiken. Mayor and council and Stuart and staff. It's always good to see you guys. Stuart told me I had as much time as I needed, as long as I did it in three minutes. So, anyway, I appreciate you letting me come here tonight and give you guys an update. We did this last time in the summer, and we've been working very hard since then, and I wanted to share it with you guys. So this is on the new mixed-use building project. We've gotten all our approvals as far as the DRB and reviewing it with council. We are now in our permitting phase because the design is complete, which is a big milestone for the project. That's Cheatem Fletcher Scott. You guys probably remember Cam Scott and Richard Fletcher were here. And they have been doing a great job for us. We actually have a whole project team that works on this, and we meet regularly. But that design is complete. Now we're in permitting. I'd say we're probably ninety percent complete in permitting. We've had some questions back and forth, which is normal on projects and been answering them, and I think we're pretty close to having a building permit on that. As you guys know, we've got a groundbreaking plan for January twenty-seventh at three-thirty, and we're going to do that at the project site. So that's exciting. That means that also that our budget's in good shape. As you guys are aware, we got twenty million to build this. And one of the things we do when we're going through the design process is we want to make sure that every, all the elements fit inside the budget that we have. So part of what we do is once we get the design done, we stop at certain phases in the design and we check the budget for construction. So that's what we did with Alan Bachelor, who's our CM at Risk contractor. And so Alan Bachelor went through the details of an estimate, and we did that with each phase of the drawings. And so we've gone through three of those, and the last one was on our construction drawings, and all of that's within budget. And so they now have an updated construction contract to get this built for us. And they have a notice pending our receipt of our building permit to get going the same week that we break ground ceremonially. It's about fifteen months to build it, so we'll be building in two thousand and twenty-five and into the spring of two thousand and twenty-six. We're in really good shape with the furniture fixtures and equipment as far as that design. The IT and the communications package is also included with the construction package, and Alan Bachelor will be providing that as part of the construction package. So, the good news is we're on track with our twenty million. We've got about an eight fifty, eight hundred and fifty thousand on our contingency. And that's for unforeseen risks and issues that may come up. And so we're on track with that as far as the construction schedule. Right now, we have a kind of a target move in of summer of two thousand and twenty-six. Of course, we always build in a few months for risk and that kind of thing, but I can, I'm going to say we could move in as early as summer of two thousand and twenty-six, and that's obviously what we're, what we're pushing for. Of course, I know I gave a whole bunch of facts there. I gave you guys, you know, there's some pictures there that we've seen before on the elevations and the floor plans, but, and I went through that pretty quick, but I'm available for any questions or open to them if anybody has any. In summary, the project's going good, so now we get to go build it now that we designed it, keep it in budget.
I want to thank Mark for keeping us on task and keeping the budget, project budget in control. And actually, we're, I don't want to jinx this, but we're in very good shape with our budget.
Yes, sir, working very hard at that.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Appreciate you doing it.
Thank you, guys.
The final presentation is by the city manager. He's going to provide an update on our Hurricane Helene recovery. Mr. Beanbo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since my last update, we've completed a first debris collection pass and have begun the second pass. One of the things I want everyone to remember is the storm hit September twenty-seventh, overnight the twenty-sixth ended the twenty-seventh, and we began picking up debris at address September thirtieth at our property, excuse me, our account holders, our yard debris customers. So while we did a first pass, I'm not saying that all the property owners had their debris out, but we are doing a second pass. We believe that will go much faster than the first pass, and we will continue to do passes until we've collected all the storm debris. We've collected over sixty-one thousand cubic yards of debris, our staff alone. Excuse me. On December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, we announced that January sixth, two thousand and twenty-five was the deadline for storm debris to be set out for pickup. Now, what does that mean? That means if this is a FEMA requirement that we have to, you know, any debris we pick up and take to the FEMA-approved debris site has to be from the storm. So, most storm debris damaged by Helene is brown. And, oh, you need a copy of the, you have a copy at your desk. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying. So, my apologies. So, we have, we have that deadline. Our contractor, SDR, continues cleanup efforts through today. We got an email at the start of this meeting. They've collected now fifty-six thousand one hundred and forty-nine cubic yards within the city limits through today. Our contractors continue to work on, SCDOT contractors continue to work on state roads in areas throughout the city, including Pine Log Road and the Coker Springs area. They are not yet providing the amount of debris they've collected within the city limits. I want to thank Senator Young. He and I've had a number of conversations here between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and he was able to use his senatorial levers to bring us extra DOT trucks to help with the debris pickup, especially in the Calmia Hills and Highland Park area. Christmas in Hoplins proceeded on schedule with a one-and-a-half percent increase in attendance. You may ask, what does that have to do with the hurricane? Well, the grounds at Hoplins Gardens and Rye Patch were, were hit very hard by Helene. We recognized how valuable Christmas in Hoplins is to our community. So we were in there very early on getting it cleaned up so we could hold, host this important, what we view as an important community event for our morale of our citizenry. To date, we've spent over one million five hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars on hurricane-related non-payroll expenses. We have not yet gotten any bills from our debris contractor. We did get one from our debris monitoring firm, but not the debris contractor. So this number will go up quite a bit, probably, I think it's safe to say it'll be close to double, if not more. We meet regularly with FEMA. And again, I want to reiterate any misconceptions. FEMA does not advance money to communities that have, that have a disaster declaration. It is a strictly you pay and get reimbursed. So we are keeping account of all the receipts. We are uploading the data to the FEMA website regularly, and it's being reviewed, and we will get most of this money back, if not all of it. The one-hundred percent reimbursement of FEMA was extended thirty days to the end of this month. Whether it's extended again, that is up to other higher-level governmental authorities. I will say, in talking with Senator Young and other members of the delegation, they have already begun discussions with the state Ways and Means Committee and Senate Finance that as was the case in prior FEMA-declared disasters, any monies that the city was not reimbursed by FEMA for, the state comes in and makes up the difference. So we will be almost entirely made whole, I feel sure. But again, there is a process to this, and it takes time. I believe, and the finance director can correct me, from the winter ice storm packs in two thousand and fourteen, we did not get our last payment back until two thousand and twenty-one? Yep, it took, so it's almost biblical, the amount of time it takes. We have a storm debris cleanup map. We continue to update things on our social media page and the city website. I want everyone to understand, if it didn't come from the city website, I cannot guarantee the veracity of it. I also want to take a moment to mention and compliment our staff and other partners and agencies with Winter Storm Cora that came through here on Friday. It certainly did not pack as much as a punch as we thought it could, but we were able to keep roads passable and open in partnership with DOT. Did a lot of salting and sanding of roads, and we were prepped and prepared for what Winter Storm Cora might have brought us. But from a weather event and disaster standpoint, we did very well. And Madam Mayor and Council, that is my report at this point in time.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question? I know there's a difference, and I don't understand it, and I don't think citizens quite understand it either. There's a difference between storm debris from the hurricane and difference between the leaves that fell off the trees in November. So how is that picked up? I've had some complaints on the idea of the leaves blowing everywhere.
Oh, yes.
Who picks up the leaves? I don't guess the state trucks are picking up leaves. So how are we handling all that?
That is, we are, as we're going around, we dedicate, now that we have gotten a first pass, obviously, we did get off of the yard debris schedule in the immediate aftermath and for an extended duration post-September twenty-seventh. We are picking up, and Lex, if you could fill, correct me on any details, we are sending teams around for a second pass, but we also have dedicated teams, a dedicated team on those days to get yard debris.
That's correct. We've got trucks that are dedicated to both storm debris and trucks that are dedicated to yard debris. So as we're moving through during the second pass, both are being picked up. Storm debris that we pick up is, of course, going to Citizens Park where the normal yard debris is going to the CND landfill because we can't commingle those, which complicates it and makes it a little less efficient, but we're, we're making the best of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam, I have a question to our city manager.
Oh, absolutely. And Anderson Pond, I was asked, that is the county's contractor's debris site.
Question's been asked, do we expect the majority of the debris to be picked up by April?
April of this year? Yes, by Masters.
Well, that's, they politely asked April.
We do, we do expect to have a vast majority of it picked up by April twenty-twenty, by the second week of April twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may. The, I don't know what, stumps? I think Lex and I talked about this early on, but we were in no place to really think about them. But, you know, some of them are so gigantic, and I know our trucks and hooks cannot manage. How are, how are those going to be handled? You know, there, a lot of the...
We've got one team that's dedicated to nothing but stumps, and we've gotten creative in picking them up. We feel like we've picked up, we've picked up the largest one we know of at this point, so we think we're going to be able to manage it.
Good. I didn't know if you were going to try to cut them down or how, but you figured out a way to do it, correct?
We have.
Thank you very much because people have asked me that, and I said, well, you haven't been forgotten.
It's a slow process, but we have a crew that's doing that all day, every weekday.
I have a question. I'm a little upset that I'm just finding out that you actually removed those as well because I just paid twenty-two hundred dollars to get one removed from my yard.
Well, you would have had to got it out to the right of way for us to do anything with it.
All right. Just checking.
Has to be on the street.
Madam Mayor, quick question, just for clarification. The Anderson Pond debris pile is for, it's the county's. City of Aiken debris piles are located where?
The city debris pile is located at Citizens Park. That is not for the public to use, though. The public can take their storm debris to the Connector Road, the Barden landfill, I guess they call it, on Connector Road, which is in Graniteville between Sedlo Lake Road and... The road escapes me, and anyway.
Connector.
Yeah, it's, Connector Road's between the two. But anyway, that's, members, anyone in the city or the county can take their own storm debris to the Barden landfill. If they don't want to wait, if they put it by the curb, we will collect it, and we deposit it at Citizens Park where it's ground up and then sent to a organic landfill in Blackpool, South Carolina.
Thank you, Stuart. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Stuart, Madam Mayor, you commented about the staff and the job that they're doing, but it's really been a great team effort by our staff, especially the debris and the pickup and a lot of coordination on top of the other things that you experience every day. And it's not easy to manage all of these things that are occurring, but you do it very, very well. And you all deserve a huge thank you. I think we need to give you a round of applause. Really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Sorry. We now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of thirty minutes. Yes, sir. How are you, Mr. Clare?
Good evening. I'm George Clare, seven-eighty-two Burden Lake Road. As you know, I work with the Aiken County Homeless Housing Organization, but I'm not here to talk about that tonight. I'm here to support the Aiken County Homeless Coalition that Mary was here speaking earlier because that's our parent organization. In fact, our organization was born out of a preliminary data gathering activity similar to what the Aiken Homeless Task Force is going to be trying to do in the future. And that activity back in early two thousand and one identified the need for transitional housing as a significant gap in the city of Aiken. Now, I'm no longer on the Coalition Board, but I still consider myself a member of the organization, and they're doing good things. I simply want to point out that our programs are not inappropriately duplicating or overlapping activities. Of course, like all the nonprofits in town, we compete, a little friendly competition for the donation dollars. Just a part of life. But I can assure you, for example, we will be coordinating with Michael Good and his LifeNav program so that our supportive activity does not unnecessarily duplicate his. And just as a, as a possible example, if both people in his program and our program need money management counseling, why we can ask Security Federal to give one class, and people from both organizations get the same message at the same time. So Aiken deserves and needs both organizations and both organizations deserve your support as you have demonstrated over the past period. And thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Kirk.
Good evening, Kurt Johnson, 114 Brewster Way, Aiken, South Carolina, 29803. Pastor or co-pastor of Hope Team along with Lex Perry. The Hope Team means helping other people every day. And thank you to the city, to Stuart and all of you for what you have done. Over the last month, month and a half, we have been able to go out into the streets and we are really starting to make a difference out there. We are bringing them into the office. We are being able to meet their immediate needs. If they need driver's license, we are able to do that. They need healthcare, we're able to set them up with that. And if they just need a sleeping bag, a tent, dry clothes, whatever they need, we have been able to supply that as well. So we are so thankful for everything that you all have done for us. And we're just, we're so blessed that this has happened. And we just look forward to continuing this, this association with the city. You guys have made a big difference and you might not notice it, but the people in the city do notice it. We are, we are getting a lot of people that are coming up to us and saying, we heard about your team and what can we do to help? So we're getting the social workers that are starting to come out. We're getting people, we're getting other ministries that are coming together and that's what it's about. It's about the ministries coming together. It's not all about government coming together. It's beautiful when government does come together with us, but when we get all of them together, we're going to make a big difference in this town. So I want to thank you all and Happy New Year. And it has been really, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
You follow you do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lex Perry, 1526 South Boundary Avenue Southeast. As Pastor Kirk has said, I'm the other half of the, well, we are the other half of the Hope Team. And again, I want to express our gratitude and thank you for your assistance in enabling us to actually to get out, to help people. We are a boots-on-the-ground ministry and we love to go out and meet people every single day where they are so that we can assist them to break the cycle of the homelessness and things that you see. We don't see you as the government and us. You are part of this community. We all have different roles to play in this. We are one community, we're one family here in Aiken. As I've said before, when I came up here, we absolutely love this city. We love everything about it. People are drawn here because of its beauty, because of its safety and because of how hospitable people are here. That's one of the reasons why people who are homeless are coming here from the different states, as far as New York, North Carolina, all these places. We have met people who have come from these areas or being, you know, either just moving here, family here, or whatever the case may be. But they know that this is a safe place. And what you're able, what you're enabling us to do is to beat them where they are. And there is no price tag you can put on that, you know? You just, simply just doing what you have the ability to do is just amazing. So again, I want to thank you for all that you do. Please, anytime at all, you want to come down and really get details as to what we're doing and how we're approaching this issue. This, as you've already heard tonight, it is a massive issue. But you know what? Everybody that we've talked to, the vast majority of people, they want to be productive members of this community, just like all of us. And that's what we want to do. We're able to walk them through the process, step by step, person by person. Every single person is individual, every single situation is very individual. But you know what? We can do it. We absolutely can do this. I know it sounds overwhelming, but what you're doing every single day, you're making the decision to meet a person where they are, what you can do from your position, what you can do as a citizen here in this city, it makes a difference. So I thank you above all. I praise God that he's put it on your hearts in order to help us and just please continue to do so because it is making a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, City Councilman there, how are you all doing? Good to see you all. Stuart, I just wanted to thank you and I want to make a special shout out to Mr. Phillip Noah, who's been working along with Tatiana. She's actually seen us as an asset and he's actually come and asked us some, how he could better make some ADA accommodations for the city. So that's been kind of cool. We've been in talks with him about that. But particularly, we wanted to thank you guys for getting the streets cleaned so that she could walk around. She's, I don't think she's feeling, she's feeling very good. We're about to have a baby in July, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So she'll be able to walk a lot easier and we'll be able to walk the kid out. But I just wanted to thank, while we're all in a moment of gratitude and thanks, you know, just want you all to know how thankful we are for all the work that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jensen.
Yeah, I know they've been very helpful to, we depend on public input in addition to our own work to identify areas where we want our pedestrian sidewalks and such to be as safe as possible. And our ADA coordinator, Phil Noah, has worked with Tatiana and on this and Jensen. So thank you for that.
Congratulations to you.
To you both.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening and Happy New Year to you all. Lois Rinaldini, 638 Magnolia Street. I am here again to talk about what we can do to accelerate ending this lawsuit that we brought against the city. I was here a couple of months ago. A couple of council members said, we have nothing to hide. We're all for disclosure. And mistakes were made, but at the end of the day, nothing's happened. Your lawyer continues to oppose disclosing anything. Still hasn't given us anything relevant. Every month that goes by is another $10,000 of expense, wasting taxpayer money on motions and obscure arguments about why he has to protect the lawyer client privilege of the AMDC, which is defunct. Maybe he's doing what he thinks is the right thing, but the bottom line is nothing's happening. So I want to just say, we all have this opportunity. You know, you see the difference in these meetings now. They're positive, the community feels good about what the city's doing. I think you have an opportunity and to some extent a duty to get on the right side of this and say, let's get that information out. Let's let the public know what happened, who's responsible. It would, it's just a good thing for the community to do and for the community to know. We're not looking for damages from the city in our lawsuit. All we're looking for is an acknowledgement that things were done wrong. And the only reason we have to sue you to get an acknowledgement that things were done wrong is because you're not disclosing it. If you just disclosed, you know, if I were mayor, I would have investigated what happened and told the public what happened. Now, it's a pretty unnatural act and you know, most municipal lawyers will tell you, don't do that because you're going to expose yourself to liability, blah, 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 blah. But the reality is, when you stop and think about it, what the lawyer should be doing on behalf of the public interest is avoiding those problems in the first place. But also, when those problems occur, finding a way to make it known and correct it. So my suggestion to you is you put a resolution on your agenda for the next meeting saying you're instructing your lawyers to take expeditious action or some appropriate words, happy to work with you on the language, to get this thing resolved. Because, you know, at every step when they're talking, there have been lots of negotiations about how we get this information. Says, well, you know, I don't have permission from my client to do that. I, you know, but whatever.
Can you wrap up?
But here we are. It's two and a half years since the project's dead. I don't know what you're trying to protect.
Thank you.
So I would really urge you to consider that. And, you know, we did ask, how much has the city spent on this defending this lawsuit? Do we have an answer to that?
Can you wrap up so that we can leave, give somebody?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
Thank you all. Thank you, thank you so much. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Mayor and Council, my name is Barbara Williams and I'm at 510 Camilla Street, Aiken. I just want to talk on behalf of the Sugar Hill Neighborhood Association. And the first thing I want to do is really thank Stuart for allowing the association to take advantage or to use Smith Hazel for one of our first outreach activities. And that outreach activity was to give out what we call personal items to people, the everyday items, not just hot food or, no disrespect to, pass it to coats for the winter, but just everyday things that people use every day. Things, toothbrushes, toothpaste, washcloths, soap, all those kinds of things that they use all the time. And that activity went very, very well. Here again at Smith Hazel, Stuart, I thank you. We were able to store things there and ultimately distribute things from that location. So I really thank you for that. And we were able to put together about a hundred, about a hundred bags, you know, that people could come and get. And we plan to do this every quarter. We are getting donations from individuals. So we thank the individuals who were able to donate for that cause and it went well and we plan for it to go well in the future. So thank you and thank the community very, very much for that. The other thing that we're doing is we're having our first financial literacy, and I'm trying to speak fast. We're having our first financial literacy training that we held at the Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. About forty people have already registered for that. And as you know, financial literacy is an issue nationwide. Some school jurisdictions have absolutely made it mandatory that they put in a financial literacy program in schools. So we'll be doing that on January 25th. And lastly, one fun thing that we did in our community, we had a Christmas decoration competition. And as a result of that, we awarded, awarded a gift, a monetary gift to the first and second and third home in Sugar Hill. And we had two honorable mentions in Edgewood for that as well. So it was a fun, fun activity and we plan to do that every year as well. So overall, it was good. We've been very busy, we're still working on some things. So I thank you all for your support. I thank the city for the support and the county and we plan to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Jim Bunton. I live at 189 Indian Springs Road here in Aiken. I just have a question. We, talking about the storm damage debris, is there any pickup in the counties? Or in Aiken County?
Yeah, the county has a contractor that, they do not have a yard waste pickup service like city residents do as part of your garbage fee. So you, they, you would have to contact the county. They are using a contractor called SDR. I can't recall what the acronym is, but that is who will be picking up your debris. And I, I would just encourage you to call the county administrator's office, 803-642-2012, and they can give you specific information to the county. We're really not privy to that. We just are focusing inside the city limits.
So you don't know that they're just going hitting the roads and picking up debris?
They, they, they are, yes. If they are, you have to have it out on your curbside. Now, do you know, is the road that you reside on, is it a county or state?
State road. I would think county.
Okay, yeah, the county contractor would pick that up. The DOT contractor, I tell you what, if you could give him my contact info, Lex, you can reach out to me and I'll talk to you and look into that and we can get you square on who would be responsible for picking up and see if we could find a, if there is a time or an expected an ETA.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next, we have approval and discussion of appointees to various city boards, committees and commissions. Mr. Beedenberg?
Thank you. The following nominations are up for consideration this evening. Madam Mayor and Council, Brooke Thomas and Lila Wolf to the Equine Committee. Ahmed Mikel to the Design Review Board and Reverend Brendon and Jenkins Bozeman to the Energy and Environmental Committee. And that is what we have for vote tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept these nominations?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Bryce and Councilwoman Gregory second the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Motion's passed. Are there any nominations to consider at our next meeting?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Eugene White to the Energy and Environmental Committee.
And Mayor, I would like to reappoint Karen Daly to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Karen was actually my first appointee that I made, there wasn't a reappointee. And she served two terms, which are three years apiece, six years, and she's agreed to go nine, so I appreciate her doing that very much. And then also, on the Design Review Board, I am going to make a change. I'm going to nominate Leland Reynolds to the Design Review Board. He is a resident of downtown, lives on Barnwell Avenue, lives in a hundred-year-old house. He's a general contractor for HG Reynolds. He and his brother and his sons own HG Reynolds. The one thing that people would probably recognize of his is Aiken High. The new Aiken High was built by HG Reynolds. On top of that, he's done various sundry construction and other things within the community, but he also served the Design Review Board for eleven years and a previous stint, six of those years were as chairman. So Leland will bring some stability to that board. Also, I want to thank Faith Hawks. I talked to Faith for, well, many different times, but today we had a long conversation. It was a good conversation. I appreciate Faith very much. I told her I would speak to the fact that as chair, she was a reluctant chair of DRB. It was unfortunate, I had phone calls of people complaining that she was not a very good chair. She was a fine chair, none of this was her fault. I'm not doing it because of Faith. In fact, if Faith was brought up by one of the other council members, I would be in favor of that. But at this point, I felt like this was my one and only appointee. Her time had run out and again, I thanked her for her time and I look forward to Leland getting back on the DRB.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have two. Under the Energy and Environment Committee, Brendon and Bozeman asking consideration for reappointing her to that board.
And you were voting on her tonight.
Okay. How am I thinking about that?
Have you already voted?
Yep, y'all, y'all have already voted on.
That's an error on my part, I'm sorry. I have another one, but that's okay.
Do you?
No, that's, no, not, I hadn't contacted this other person.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, so that is it? Okay. The final item under old business is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance accepting the fiscal year 2023-2024 audit.
Thank you. It's entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Audited Financial Statements and Authorizing Variances to the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Budget Ordinance." Our auditor was here at our last meeting to go over the audited financial statements. They reviewed that and issued an unqualified or colloquially known as a clean opinion with no material weaknesses. with no material weaknesses nor instances of non-compliance material to the financial statements. Um, and I would like to again express my appreciation for the finance staff led by the Finance Director, Ms. Rooks, for this, um, uh, working with auditors. And, um, as you know, we, uh, pride ourselves on the, um, on, uh, spending the money, uh, spending money, uh, in an appropriate fashion, following appropriate guidelines. And this is before counsel for second reading and approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved, Mayor?
Councilwoman Gregory appro, uh, made the motion. I have a second.
Second, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll second the motion. Comments from the public, please? Comments from council? All those in favor? Motion's passed. Thank you. We now move to New Business. We have several items under New Business this evening. The first item is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex five Ivy Circle and zone it RS fifteen residential single family. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's entitled, "An Ordinance to Annex Property Located at Five Ivy Circle and Zone the Same Residential Single Family RS Fifteen." Uh, the applicant and owner has requested annexation. It is consistent with surrounding single-family residential uses and zoning. It is in the Aiken Estates area. All present at the Planning Commission at their December tenth meeting recommended annexing and zoning RS fifteen. And is before you for first reading, Madam Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Woltz and Councilwoman, Woman Broll second the motion. Thank you. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Motion's passed. Thank you. The next item is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex seventeen sixty-six Two Notch Road and zone it RS ten residential single family. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. It's entitled, "An Ordinance to Annex Property Located at One Seven Six Six Two Notch Road and Zone the Same Residential Single Family RS Ten." The applicant and owner, uh, is recommending this annexation of, uh, the parcel approximately twenty-three hundredths of an acre. And it is in the Virginia Acres subdivision number two area. Um, all those present at the December tenth Planning Commission meeting unanimously recommended annexing and zoning RS ten is before you for first reading tonight.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion? Councilman Woltz made the motion.
I'll second.
Councilman, uh, Price second the motion. Thank you. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? I have a comment. That house is absolutely gorgeous. The people have done a beautiful job renovating it, and we should be very proud to have them in this city. All those in favor? Motion passed. Thank you. Now we have first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to rezone property at seven forty Teague Street Northwest from planned institutional to limited professional. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. This is an ordinance amending the zoning of property located at seven forty Teague Street Northwest from planned institutional PI to limited professional LP. The owner and applicant has requested the rezoning of this approximately thirty-six hundredths of an acre parcel, uh, which is located on the west side of Teague Street between Columbia Avenue and Hill Avenue. It was previously zoned limited professional LP, uh, prior to the twenty nineteen Clyburn Center Campus rezoning to PI Planned Institutional. It is no longer part of the Clyburn Center complex, and the request is to return it to its former zoning classification of limited professional LP. Um, this LP zoning would allow for either an office or for residential use. It would be compatible with the current office and residential land uses on nearby property. Um, city water and sewer, sanitary sewer services are available. Those present at the December tenth Planning Commission meeting unanimously recommended it be approved, uh, to the rezoning to LP. And it's before you for first reading, Madam Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Councilwoman Price made the motion. I need a second.
I second.
Councilwoman Diggs second the motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Motion passed. Thank you. The fourth item under New Business is first reading and of an ordinance to rezone property at twenty-two twenty-three Whiskey Road from general business to planned commercial and approve a concept plan. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. It is entitled, "An Ordinance uh, amending the zoning of real estate owned by Carmella Sears from general business to planned commercial PC and approve a concept plan. The applicant is requesting the rezoning of forty-three hundredths of an acre parcel at twenty-two twenty-three Whiskey Road from general business to planned commercial and approve the concept plan." Uh, the developer is requesting, uh, approval to construct a drive-through coffee, um, restaurant. Uh, the applicant proposes to remove the existing building and redevelop the lot. Um, the council has complete discretion over the concept plan with this request. It fronts, uh, the west side of Whiskey Road and adjoining properties to the north and across an access drive to the south. Um, the, uh, it used to be a Checkers hamburger drive-through restaurant. Um, the building will be removed and redesigned on the site. It'll be a five hundred and ten square foot building with a smaller detached storage unit. It will be drive-through only, no seating inside or outside. Since parking requirements are based on seating, a drive-through only restaurant is not required to provide parking. The concept plan shows that five parking spaces, one for handicap use will be provided. Existing access to the site will be maintained, which consists of a right-in, right-out only driveway on Whiskey Road and an access drive on the southern side from the nearby shopping center. Any tree removal will have to comply with the landscape and tree preservation requirements in the zoning ordinance. The current sign on the property does not meet the PC planned commercial requirement that it be a monument sign. The concept plan shows retention of the existing two access points and an onsite circulation system consistent with a drive-through along with extensions of sidewalks along Whiskey Road. The design of the parking lot drainage and utilities must meet the requirements of the planning and the, uh, city engineer. Since it is within the Whiskey Road overlay, it is required to be a planned commercial zoning regardless of its parcel size. And the concept plan does not denote the percentage of open space being provided. Um, according to the zoning ordinance, no structure of any kind shall be, um, erected within fifteen feet of any single-story, other single-story structure unless granted by the building official. There is a five-foot separation between the primary building and the accessory storage structure. However, the building inspector does not believe it will create any public safety concerns. It will, the storage unit will be situated between Whiskey Road and the primary building, and the lot depth is about a hundred and thirty-six feet. Uh, the applicant has requested a waiver of the seventy-five-foot setback required by PC. This concept plan cites the new building with a forty-three-foot rear setback. A traffic study will be submitted if required. It is in the, um, will have street frontage sidewalk, street trees, installation of curb and gutter to close any ditches on Whiskey Road. The developer will pay a fee in lieu of installation of those, um, he, he, the developer can pay the fee or do that work. All those present at the Planning Commission meeting on December tenth approved the rezoning to planned commercial with the following conditions. One, that the provision of sanitary sewer and water service shall be contingent upon service availability. Two, that the accessory storage building be visually screened by evergreen shrubbery of at least three feet high at the time of planning and at least seven feet high at maturity. For, uh, third, that a waiver is granted to decrease the minimum rear building setback from seventy-five feet to forty-three feet. Fourth, the adjacent property owner grants the necessary access stormwater management and dumpster easements. Five, the dumpster area shall be screened in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Six, any freestanding signage be monument style. Seven, a traffic impact study if required shall be submitted and approved by DOT and the city's traffic consultant, and that the developer shall construct any traffic mitigating measures that are identified as necessary. Eight, that the sidewalk and curb and gutter improvements shall be installed along the Whiskey Road frontage or payment of a fee in lieu of installation shall be provided. Nine, that a revised concept plan listing conditions of approval and any changes required by council be submitted within a hundred and eighty days, and the, the applicant sign an agreement stating the conditions of approval within a hundred and eighty days. This is before you for first reading tonight.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Gregory made the motion.
And I'll second the motion.
Councilwoman Broll second the motion. Any comments from the public? Good evening.
Um, yes, uh, my name is David Banks. I'm the engineering company, surveying company, plan planner that has, um, drawn the drawing that y'all have seen. Um, I, I'm here to answer any questions, but I'm also, the screening of the, the building, auxiliary building, which is a storage building for, it's basically a cooler that they, it's not attached to the building. Um, that screening is, if we had to put in seven-foot high, I believe it's bushes or trees, it would basically block our building. It's part of the structure. And if you've seen a Seven Brews, which is what this is, coffee shop, um, it's really, you don't realize it's not part of the building. It's, it's only five feet apart. It's just separated because whoever drew the first one, that's what they did. Uh, don't know why, um, but I, I would like to get that removed from the conditions if possible. Um, the, because basically it would, it would screen our whole site from Whiskey Road, which is the reason we've chose this site. I don't know if that's.
Is that our, our, our area?
I mean, you do, uh, council does have the ability to grant that waiver if, uh, they so desire, if you so desire.
Yeah. I mean, we, we'll put landscaping, but seven-foot high, the, I mean, the.
At the maturity.
The structure is, is probably twelve feet high. So you, you're not gonna be able to see the, the.
Didn't it say three feet to start and growing to seven?
Um, yes, the, uh, there was some landscaping that was, uh, three feet, uh.
Three feet, planting, seven feet.
Yep, that planting.
Yeah.
So you would, you would like to, to do?
I would like to just at least low-profile landscaping, because it is, it is basically the front of our store.
Is it silver, the building?
Um.
Instead of like a?
I have a rendering of it. I would like to, I don't know if y'all can pull that up on the screen?
Doesn't the roofing connect it?
Yeah.
The ones I've seen.
I'm not an architect, so I don't know. I've driven by them. I can't tell you just.
Just because the ones I've seen, I've seen where there's a smaller separate.
Well, I know we have a canopy roof.
Yes.
I don't think they're connected, but I think it overhangs it. And I don't know if y'all have the, the rendering. I think was part of y'all's packet. I don't know.
I've seen, I've seen a couple.
This is.
It's in here. Yes.
Okay, yes.
We can't possibly have the whole thing. Um, you've got two.
It may not show that in written, uh, part of it. I, I, like I said, I'm not the architect. I, they just asked for a rendering. They gave me that, so.
They gave you an, an exterior elevation, front and back. There you go. I mean, that's all we've got as far as a rendering.
It sits on the.
Anything to come with that.
On the non-drive-through side. And, I mean, it's a small building. I mean, it's, it's really just a cooler for the, it's not connected to the building.
And we can get a, uh, a, a rendering of what we envisioned for, uh, before a second reading.
Okay, I can, I can bring those. I can.
Yep.
They're all, they're all, all over the.
Um, I, I've seen two different ones.
Yes. Yeah, they're, they're. Okay.
Part of the building, but it's separate from the building.
Yeah. And actually, some of our signage is on that. So I would like to at least have that as point of discussion at the next meeting.
It's just a chain? It's a chain. Okay.
It is a franchise business.
Who knew? Well, it. I've got a, a clarification. Can I get a, I want to get a clarification from Maria. I mean, it just says that there will be a, that the accessory storage building be visually screened by evergreen shrubbery at least three feet high at time of planning, at least seven feet high at, at maturity. It doesn't say where that screen is supposed to be placed.
Well, the assumption is it would be to screen the excess, the, we, we're treating it as an accessory building.
Okay.
Because it's not attached. So that's why it kicked into the, that seven-foot-high screening, which would actually be around it. Yeah.
Okay.
So I can see why, if, if they feel like it's actually part of the building, well, that could be an issue. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
This reminds me of, of when we, um, voted on Parkers on, um, highway, on Richland, Aiken Augusta Highway.
Highway one.
And we looked at the pricing, right? The gas pricing and then the signage elevation.
Right.
And one of my biggest things was, I know we didn't, didn't conform necessarily, but we wanted to do it because that's the whole purpose of them being a business. It says so they can show their gas prices, not hide them because of this and that and shrubbery and all that. And that's how these kind of work, in my opinion, is that it is a separate building, but it's part of the whole operation. And they do have the signage, the colored branding, and everything goes in conjunction with it. So in my brain, covering it up with shrubbery, I get the conformity of it because of, you know, or whatever, non-overlay on Whiskey Road. But, um, you know, there, there's, we don't want to have them cover it. So I'm just throwing that out there. I think everybody should look at it, view it. The pictures are online. It's a franchise. They're all, they all look the same pretty much.
Yeah, they do.
Um, but it seems pretty fair to me.
Well, and also getting, looking at your, excuse me, I'm sorry, at your schematic.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a tough lot to get everything on.
Very tough lot. Yes, ma'am.
And.
It's actually two lots.
Yeah, it's two lots. And then plus you have a detention.
Yeah, that detention bond is on our adjacent, on the adjacent property. We have a lease to, for that and the access and the dumpster, which is part of y'all's.
So you're going, at the next meeting, you're gonna bring some other?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring some more information on that. And I, I just wanted to at least bring that up at this point.
I think our, the concern is, as has been stated already, that it's landscaped nicely. We understand that you don't want to completely hide your business.
No.
When they come to maturity. Otherwise, you're coming to us or someone and asking, can we cut these?
Yeah, it would look like it does now. So.
And from what you're describing, I don't think I'd have a problem with it, but I can't do it from this. I don't.
Understand.
So just bring a rendering.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I will. I will. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I, I, I'll be honest with you. I didn't realize that was gonna be y'all's focus.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and in my brain, I'm just seeing that check.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rendering, yeah.
Rendering, yeah.
Four-second reading.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Comments from council? Council comments?
We, we already did that.
We did.
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor for?
You can, um, or you can wait until, uh, he brings the graphics, which we will put in the agenda packet for second reading. And you can make the amendment at second reading. You could pass it as written pending the, uh, um, renderings that, uh, that he will provide.
Yes. Do that.
Yes.
Do that.
So you're gonna vote on, the ordinance is written with the understanding, we'll get the rendering, um, in the packet for second reading.
Okay. All those in favor? No, I need, I'm sorry. I need a motion, I think. I need a motion.
No, no, so moved.
I did.
You already got your motion.
Sorry. There we go. I'm losing my train of thought. All those in favor? Okay. Um, motion passed. I need some coffee.
Yeah, we are bringing some coffee at the next one.
The final item under New Business is first reading of an ordinance to adjust the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. It, this is an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Uh, I, this is, uh, for consideration. Three items first. Uh, I will say, this is the, the planning department's asked for a position for a number of years. Uh, and I've consistently not budgeted it, but given the amount of workflow in the planning depart, uh, specifically, uh, to help the Design Review Board Planner, uh, there is a tremendous amount of work, uh, that, uh, in applications, and we believe that's only gonna continue to, on the uptick. Um, this will help, uh, this also, uh, amendment to the, um, uh, we're gonna fund an additional item in our zoning ordinance to perform an audit of our design guidelines and our application process. process, uh, because I think that would be appropriate based on what we've, um, what we've worked, worked with, um, here over the last six months or so. Second adjustment, the Department of Public Safety is upgrading several dispatch consoles. We are requesting a budget adjustment of, to transfer some depreciation funds so we can, um, uh, replace, replace those dispatch consoles. We came up a little short in our budget estimating. Finally, we have gotten the two-and-a-half-million-dollar EPA sewer grant. That was, uh, thanks to an appropriation from Senator Graham, uh, with the work by William Clyburn and others, uh, Richard Perry. And this will, uh, allow us to capture that sewer grant of two-and-a-half million dollars so we can do the, uh, Croft Mill Sewer Project. So, this being said, uh, this is for counsel consideration at first reading this evening.
Do I have a motion to amend this?
So moved.
I second.
Giridoh and Councilwoman Diggs seconded the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from counsel?
This is great.
Yes. Leslie and I had a conversation today without even thinking about this.
All those in favor? Motion passed, thank you. We now move to petitions and requests. The first is approval of a resolution for a memorandum of understanding between the City of Aiken and the Aiken Performing Arts Group, Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. Since two thousand and seven, we have had a partnership with APA, which, um, was so well-described at the beginning of our meeting. Our five-year MOU, um, is about to expire. This updates our agreement for a five-year period with the right to renew for an additional five years unless either party gives a ninety-day notice, and this is before counsel this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion to?
I so moved.
Mem- memorandum? That is Councilwoman Broll? No, Councilwoman Diggs, sorry, Diggs. And I need a second? And Councilwoman Price, thank you, seconded the motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from counsel? All those in favor? Thank you. Motion passed. Next item.
And seeing Tony Atteka out there, uh, with the APA, uh, just to remind counsel, we did close on the property, uh, at the airport, um, two weeks ago.
Tony, Tony, were you glad to see that one go?
I was.
I can only imagine. Yeah. I'm glad it's over.
Okay, well. Thank you. Next item is approval of a memorandum of understanding with Second Baptist Church Community Development Corporation.
Thank you. Uh, speaking of real estate closings, December twentieth, we sold the, uh, Jackson Petroleum property. Uh, that project is closed since CDBG funds were used. Any proceeds must be returned to CDBG to be used in low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods as described in our five-year plan. One of the things we were talking about earlier also was affordable housing opportunities to help low-to-moderate-income families. Second Baptist CDC, you may remember, over the years, they've acquired lots in Crosland Park and also, uh, along Abbeyville Avenue. They, we have a longstanding partnership with them, uh, to help with, um, homeownership for these, uh, low-to-moderate-income families. And we've prepared a memorandum of understanding to continue the partnership and provide a hundred thousand dollars of the sales proceeds from the monies for, from Jackson Petroleum to this. And what this will allow for the completion of pre-development activities to include architectural drawings, surveying, and engineering studies for the up to seventeen homes in Crosland Park and three houses on Abbeyville Avenue. And the Second Baptist CDC will be responsible for tracking and recording, reporting these expenses as part of this agreement. Again, this is monies, uh, I think we spent a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the Jackson Petroleum building. We sold it for three-fifteen after we cleaned it up with a EPA Brownsville grant. The fruits of those proceeds, a portion of that would, um, if counsel passes, uh, this would go to Second Baptist. See, uh, there's Community Development Corporation.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there a motion to do that?
I so moved.
Councilwoman Diggs, Woman Diggs, and Councilwoman Price seconded the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from counsel? All those in favor? Motion passed, hooray. Thank you. The third item is approval of a resolution to accept a deed of dedication for water and sanitary sewer lines and related equipment and associated easements for Rivers Crossing Subdivision Phase Two. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. Uh, this is for water and sanitary sewer lines and related equipment and easements in Phase Two of Rivers Crossing, which is located off of Edgefield Highway, SC nineteen, off of Williams Drive. And, uh, our team has inspected it and recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to? Councilwoman Gregory made the motion.
I'll second.
Councilman Giridoh made the second motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from counsel? All those in favor? Motion's passed. The fourth item under petitions and requests is approval of a resolution to accept a deed of dedication for water and sanitary sewer lines and related equipment and associated easements for Rivers Crossing Subdivision Phase Three. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. This is, uh, Phase Three of the same subdivision, uh, for the same, uh, utility, uh, infrastructure, and it is before counsel for consideration.
Thank you. I need a motion from the city council person. Who would like to make a motion?
I so moved, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll.
I'll second.
And Councilman, uh, Giridoh seconded the motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from counsel?
Uh, this turned out to be a nice little subdivision. Uh, they did some work out on Highway nineteen to make the entrance much more presentable than what was there before. Real estate has slowed down quite a bit for these type of new subdivisions, so, uh, we need to think good thoughts and hopefully they'll be able to get some things moving along the way. But I'm glad to see that they're moving forward with this as opposed to letting it sit.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. The fifth item is approval of a law enforcement assistance and support agreement between Aiken Department of Public Safety and the Aiken County Sheriff's Department, Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. With the new, election of a new sheriff at this time and, uh, necessary to approve an updated agreement between our Department of Public Safety and the Sheriff's Department, former city employee investigative, investigations Captain Marty Sawyer was sworn in as sheriff last week, and, uh, this is before counsel to approve a, a new agreement with the Aiken County Sheriff's Department and the Department of Public Safety.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to, um, pass this?
I so moved.
Councilwoman Diggs and Councilwoman Gregory made the second. Or vice versa. Thank you. Thank you. Comments from the public and or councilman's, comments from the counsel? Uh, all those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. The next item under petitions and requests is approval of the Aiken Municipal Court Jury Box for twenty-twenty-five, Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. We do have, uh, the annual affidavit for your approval of the jury box. Uh, under our form of government, city council acts as jury commissioners for the city court. Uh, you must approve the preparation of the names for our box. We have twenty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-nine names in the box, and it's for approval this evening.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Price, and I need a second.
I'll second.
Councilman Giridoh seconded the.
In my eighth year, I've discovered this.
All those in favor? Everyone is in favor? Uh, motion's passed unanimously, thank you. Next, we have approval of the election schedule for the November twenty-twenty-five general election, Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. Uh, the city clerk has reviewed the city code section to get the twenty-twenty-five election schedule, and it is, uh, on the screen and in your agenda packet, culminating in a election day, November fourth of twenty-twenty-five, and this year, districts two, four, five, and six are up for, um, election.
Thank you. Is there a motion to, um, approve the election schedule?
I so moved, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll made the motion.
I second.
Council, all right. We'll get your turn, Councilman.
I think I gave it much better.
Councilman Walt, Walt seconded the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from counsel? All those in favor? Thank you. Motion's passed. And last, but not least, the final item on our agenda this evening is a resolution supporting the City of Aiken's safety program.
Thank you. We do have an active risk management and safety program, um, and as part of our, um, report card, um, having a resolution passed by city council supporting our safety program helps us, um, with our scoring, and, um, this is before you this evening for approval, annual approval.
Thank you. Uh, who would like to make the first motion? Councilman Waltz.
Good.
Yeah, good job. I'll, I'll second, so the ads.
And on the other hand, counsel.
Bookends.
Councilman Giridoh. Comments from the public? Comments from counsel? All those in favor? Thank you. Motion's passed. We now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of thirty minutes.
Bless you. God bless you.
Okay.
Fall on the floor.
We will move right along then if no one wants to say anything. Mr. Beedenbow, any, any items from the city man, from your city manager office?
Um, just a reminder that two weeks from today, at three-thirty PM, is the groundbreaking for the mixed-use building, um, just about half a block up the street from here at the one-hundred northwest block of Newberry Street.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Councilman Giridoh made the.
Adjourn.
And who is seconding?
I second, I seconded it too.
Oh, sorry.
You can second.
Broll. Seconded the motion. We are, meeting is adjourned.
I'm paying attention.
I'm Aiken City Manager Stuart Beedenbow. City council met Monday evening, January thirteenth, and approved the fiscal year two-thousand-and-twenty-three, twenty-four audit. We are pleased we had an unqualified or clean opinion. Several memoranda of understanding were passed, one with Second Baptist Church Community Development Corporation and another with Aiken Performing Arts Association. The election schedule was approved, as was the jury box for two thousand and twenty-five. A reminder, city offices will be closed on Monday, January twentieth, to celebrate the birthday of Martin Luther King Junior Holiday.